Welcome, everyone. Today is June 4th, June, wow, June 4th, 2024, and it is approximately 11:02 a.m. Today's public hearing is regarding the Maryland Department of the Environment's, the department's tentative determination to issue a National Polluted Discharge Elimination System NPDES Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System MS4 Permit. Permit number 24 DP 3313 MD 0068276 to the Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Administration for MSHA. My name is Brian Cooper, and I am a Natural Resources Planner with the department and the administrator of MSHA's MS4 Permit. With me today from the department is Ray Barr, Deputy Program Manager, Stormwater, Dam Safety and Flood Management Program; Stuart Comstock, Division Chief, Program Review Division, Stormwater, Dam Safety and Flood Management Program; and Andrew Tego, Natural Resources Planner, Program Review Division, Stormwater, Dam Safety and Flood Management Program. Also with us from MSHA are Ryan Cole and Christopher Zick. Thank you to everyone from the department and the staff from MSHA who helped in getting us to today's proceedings. We will first provide an introduction to the subject of this hearing and then review the permit history and requirements of the new permit. We will provide instructions on how to make comments and then offer local government and elected officials and the general public the opportunity to provide comments. In accordance with Maryland's Administrative Procedures Act, a tentative determination to issue MSHA's MS4 Permit has been published in the Maryland Register, advertised in the Baltimore Sun and Washington Post on April 19th and 26th, 2024, sent out to the department's interested parties list and publicized on the department's webpage where the proposed permit and supporting fact sheet material can be found. Everyone who signed in will be added to the department's interested party list and will receive notice of any actions regarding MSHA's MS4 Permit. If you want to be on the department's interested party list for this permit and did not sign in, please do so before the end of today's hearing. The purpose of today's hearing is to accept public comment on the department's tentative determination to issue MSHA's Permit. This permit authorizes the discharge of storm water into, through, or from all MS4s owned or operated by MSHA. Today's hearing is scheduled for two hours. Please note that this hearing is being recorded, and by presenting testimony today, you are giving your consent to being recorded. For background, Maryland has been delegated authority by the United States Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, to administer the NPDES program in the state. Final stormwater regulations were adopted by EPA in November 1990 according to Section 402P of the Clean Water Act. These regulations require in part that owners or operators of storm drain systems serving populations of greater than 100,000 apply for a Phase 1 NPDES Municipal Stormwater Permit. Additionally, any operators of the municipal storm sewer systems within these jurisdictions require permits as well. MSHA operates a system of highways including associated drainage systems within nine Maryland jurisdictions defined as large or medium municipalities that have existing NPDES stormwater permits. MSHA is considered a Phase 1 large MS4 due to language entitled 40 of the Code of Federal Regulations that defines a municipal separate storm sewer system as "a conveyance or system of conveniences including roads with drainage systems, municipal streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, ditches, man-made channels, or storm drains owned or operated by state, city, town, borough, county, parish, district, association, or other public body." MSHA submitted a two-year, two-part application and was issued an initial MS4 Permit in 1999. And MSHA's first permit laid the foundation for a comprehensive approach to controlling runoff. This was done by establishing the necessary legal authority, mapping storm drain system infrastructure, identifying sources of pollution, monitoring storm events to characterize urban runoff, enhancing existing erosion and sediment control and stormwater management programs, and establishing new programs for providing education in eliminating illegal storm drain system discharges. This permit was reissued in 2005 and 2015. To improve local water quality in the Chesapeake Bay, MSHA's most recent MS4 Permit included a requirement for the restoration of 20% of the impervious surface area within MSHA's permit area that was not already managed for storm water to the maximum extent practicable. To meet this requirement, MSHA was required to restore 4,621 acres of impervious area. NPDES Permits last for five years, and a reapplication is required to be submitted as part of MSHA's fourth-year annual report. MSHA submitted its fourth-year annual report on October 9th, 2019. Since that time, the department has held numerous meetings and had many conversations with individual citizens, environmental advocates, the EPA, and other local government officials that are affected by the MS4 Permit Program. The result of these meetings and conversations is the draft permit that we take up today. This permit requires MSHA to continue restoring impervious acres for the reduction of nutrients and sediments and implementing a pollution reduction plan, sorry, implementing pollution reduction plans targeting specific pollutants that impair local waters such as polychlorinated biophenols or PCBs, trash, and bacteria. This permit builds on new scientific knowledge as well as lessons learned under the previous permits. With these advancements, MSHA will continue to be a leader in reducing stormwater pollutants locally and nationally. Most significantly, the new permit incorporates MSHA's implementation of Stormwater Best Management Practices, VMPs, for impervious acre restoration using MSHA's Total Maximum Daily Load, TMDL, and VMP implementation strategy. The new permit establishes annual impervious acre restoration benchmarks throughout the five-year permit term, provides incentives to implement green stormwater infrastructure to increase the use of natural filters and VMPs that provide a climate change resiliency co-benefit. The new permit requires MSHA to develop an inventory of previously implemented green stormwater infrastructure, GSI, assess future opportunities, and make progress toward additional restoration using GSI. The new permit promotes GSI in underserved and overburdened communities by requiring MSHA to inventory past GSI implemented in underserved and overburdened communities, assess future opportunities, and make progress toward implementing additional GSI restoration practices in underserved and overburdened communities. The new permit strengthens the illicit discharge detection elimination, or IDDE, program by requiring the permitee to submit a process to prioritize the selection of outfalls for field screening and a plan and schedule for screening outfalls to the department for review and approval. It requires IDDE coordination with other MS4s for conducting investigations to track and respond to the source of an illicit discharge. It increases the use of good housekeeping and pollution prevention plans for additional MSHA-owned properties to have a greater impact on stormwater pollution prevention at key industrial areas. The new permit improves winter management of de-icing and anti-icing materials to further reduce chlorides, a pollutant of emerging concern. It leverages monitoring resources by providing MSHA the opportunity to participate in a full monitoring program and incorporates the 2021 updates to the Accounting for Stormwater Wastehold allocations and impervious acres treated, guidance for National Polluted Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Permits, or the 2021 Accounting Guidance that includes the Phase 6 Chesapeake Bay Watershed Model, new and updated VMPs, and nutrient credit trading. These and all other remaining permit conditions have been developed for abating the discharge of pollutants from MSHA's storm drain system and working toward meeting the state's receiving water criteria, water quality criteria. I would like to give MSHA the permitee an opportunity to comment and any local elected officials that desire to speak. After that, we will work down the list of speakers who signed up to give testimony today. We will then accept testimony from any individuals who did not add their names to the sign-in sheet. For all participants who are providing comments, I will call on each of you individually. After all commenters have had the opportunity to speak and there is still time, any commenter can speak more than once. Now, I would like to ask if anyone from MSHA would like to add comments to the record at this point?
No comment from MSHA.
Are there any local elected officials present that would like to comment to the record? We will now call on individuals who signed up to provide testimony. Please start by stating and spelling your name for the recording, and if you are affiliated with an organization, let us know who that is for the record. Again, please remember that by offering testimony today, you are consenting to being recorded.
Good gentleman.
Thank you. Brian England?
Thank you. My name is Brian England, E-N-G-L-A-N-G. I'm a board member of Howard County Citizen Association. I'm also Chair of the Columbia Watershed Advisory Board Committee. I'm the Honors Committee Executive President of the Council of the Public. I'd like to talk about things I'd like the new permit to address because of things I've seen over the years. So many restoration projects implemented that have been counterproductive to protect or enhance the environment. Millions of dollars are literally being washed down the road. This is what I'd like to see prevented. This is covered with little or no effort to address the uplift stormwater run-off. This has led to failure of many projects. Here are just a few examples. Red Hill 3 Restoration was washed out right from the first storm. No biological upheaval, according to a recent study. Long Forest 3, acres of trees in which hundreds have been planted, trees are done. Gray Oak 2, Stepford, was washed out at the first storm. Half acre of trees were removed. Then the replacements never grew up and they're all dead. I've told the county we're not going to have any follow-up, so it remains the same to this day and 10 years later. New Country Lane in Columbia protected. The project accelerated channel erosion, and the project took away one acre of trees. Medical Capital Project D1158, destruction of trees and shrubs. Girlwick Lane 10 Project, recently completed, destroyed wildlife habitat, turned a naked, a soaking-up rain for four decades into four lakes. Lightning View Road to 29th Street. Four acres of trees removed, absolutely no biological upheaval. The lift goes on and on. Also, many VMPs are not functioning, not even monitored by Howard County. But at the same time, my business property gets inspected every two years, and they always seem to find something I've got to do to keep my project working, the water management working. An expert I hired to address this discrepancy found that the county didn't have enough staff to inspect and enforce VMP maintenance. The EPA says when developing stormwater management plans that all stakeholders should be included. This has not happened in our county. In Howard County, many entities are not being included in the evaluation of stormwater. Even the county's common agencies do not work together. Stormwater is covered by four agencies: the Stormwater Management Division, the DBC Development Engineering Division, the Transportation Special Projects Division, and Bureau of Parks. They don't work together, and I hope this new permit makes sure that the county, different divisions work together. To summarize, the permitting process should be included. A greater emphasis on the Upland Watershed. And I've got extra. If it's time, I'd like to go with Columbia's Stormwater Mitigation Plan, but I will provide it. Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Kennedy?
I think Kennedy's that one called, remember that. While we're doing that, I come from Columbia, Maryland. In Columbia, we grow up for 50 years with a vision of Rouse. Well, Rouse is really interesting because we hear all these special comments. One of his wives said one thing. What do you think about this? This is what he said. Or she said. And this is Ross Missin.
Can you read that?
Yes, what's the sense of mopping up the floor if we don't turn off the faucet? And what we've been doing has not been turning off the faucet. We've been concentrating on mopping up the floor, which is actually bad. And after 20 years, I think we've tried to turn that around, so I hope this new permit actually does something good. Should I include that? Thank you.
Thank you.
I may ask, future speakers, if you could come up here and actually get you off and get the recorder back, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Kennedy Fitchell, and I apologize for the pronunciation.
That's okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Kennedy Fitchell, K-E-N-M-E-D-I-F-I-C-H-T-E-L, and I'm here on behalf of the Chesapeake Legal Alliance. I'm here to generally make a comment about the state of Maryland and the role we play in protecting the bay. So Governor Moore's election as Chair of Executive Council of the Bay Program served as a symbol of hope for the people of the Chesapeake Bay Watershed, wanting to see change. It could have and should have been an opportunity for the state of Maryland to lead by example in earnest efforts to meet the goals of the Bay Agreement. We still believe there's an opportunity for Maryland to lead by example, despite the Bay Program and EPA admitting that we won't be meeting our restoration goals. But this permit commits us to the status quo. This permit is ripe with opportunity as the only Phase 1 MS4 Permit issued to a state agency. And instead of setting ambitious restoration goals, it weakens the goals set by the previous permit and fails to close loopholes that allow permitees to circumvent actual stormwater management practices designed to meet our impervious surface restoration goals. Maryland is squandering an opportunity to truly restore 3,046 acres of impervious surfaces instead of implementing a system of credits with no real guidelines on how those credits might be generated. It defies logic that Maryland's definition of the maximum extent practicable in 2014 is far greater than the definition of maximum extent practicable in 2024. Looking only to the rate of inflation alone between 2014 and today, how can the state of Maryland honestly say that with far less money in 2014, they were capable of far greater maximum efforts than they are today in 2024? The only answer is that Maryland once showed a level of leadership and commitment to the public, the health, the public's health and welfare, climate resilience, and environmental justice that it simply doesn't rise to today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kenneth Bauer.
We have 30 minutes, right? My name is Kenneth Bauer, B-A-W-E-R, speaking on behalf of the Coalition Stop Stream Destruction. Please see my written comments, which I'll be sending in for more details, including scientific references. We urge MDE to remove all new stream restoration projects as well as all adaptive management items from the MS4 Permit for the following reasons. The draft permit states on page 1 that one of the Clean Water Act and NPDES water quality requirements is to, quote, "effectively prohibit pollutants and stormwater discharges into, through, or from the MS4." Stream restorations beat none of those requirements. They merely allow MS4 stormwater pollutants to flow downstream and sometimes to the floodplains. The draft of a new staff report on stream restoration states that, quote, "biological improvement is a condition of Clean Water Act permits," unquote. Since stream restorations do not meet this requirement, per the scientific literature I cite in my written comments, they should not be allowed in the MS4 Permit. The Corus NWP 27 Permit allows activities that result in net increases in aquatic resource functions and services. Again, the science shows that stream restorations do not provide functional uplift. The Corus Bay TMDL RGP Permit can also be used for stream restorations. Per an Army document on this permit, it is stated that this activity authorizes stream restoration where the activity reduces nutrients and sediment pollution and produces functional lift. Once again, the scientific evidence does not support these requirements. An analysis of over 700 projects concludes that stream restorations do not improve water quality and do not improve and sometimes degrade the ecology. The Army document states that the project must be self-sustaining. Stream restorations are not self-sustaining, as shown in Palmer's analysis of 644 projects that less than half of all stream restorations showed improvements in stabilizing channels. This is worse than a coin toss. Additional observations of Maryland projects documented in my written testimony show that they are being washed out because the root cause of the problem, uncontrolled stormwater runoff from impervious surfaces, was not addressed. Furthermore, the proven need to control non-invasive plants after a stream restoration is also not the definition of a self-sustaining project. The MEP analysis lists adaptive management programs for stream restorations. This is a euphemism for repairing failed projects and is a confirmation that stream restorations are being washed out by the offsite stressor of upland stormwater runoff. Instead, it should be required that these funds be used to treat stormwater upland from these failed stream restoration sites. So to conclude, stream restorations clearly violate the Clean Water Act, NWP 27, the Bay TMDL RGP, and therefore, they should not be allowed to practice in the MS4 Permit. Rather than allowing stream restorations that will simply get washed out as well as possibly creating a legal exposure for MDE, SHA, and the Corps, the MS4 Permit should only allow out-of-stream stormwater control projects. Thank you for your consideration.
Next, we have Bob Dover.
Hello, Bob Dover, D-O-V-E-R. I'm a surface water hydrologist. I live in Columbia. I'm speaking today to oppose stream restoration as an acceptable practice for recruiting credits under these TMDL permits. My opposition is based on my review of the post-construction monitoring reports for one of SHA's recent stream restoration projects, the Longfellow Project on land owned by the Columbia Association. The Longfellow reports, which have been accepted as final by the regulators, are riddled with sloppy errors, unsupported claims of success, and outright falsehoods. Although the field monitoring data shows that the project has failed to meet regulatory standards for reforestation, these data were not disclosed in the reports. Instead of disclosing the data and comparing it to the standard, the reports made false and misleading claims that the replanted trees were, quote-unquote, "well-established and self-sustaining," neither of which is true. The same thing happened regarding the conclusions regarding stream stability. There was a substantial mismatch between the year-three survey and the as-built survey. Instead of drawing the obvious, yet inconvenient, conclusion that erosion was occurring, the author simply decided that the as-built survey must have been flawed, then readjusted it, and then reached a conclusion that the stream was stable. There's multiple other examples where the reports made claims of benefits and successes with no supporting data whatsoever. It's clear that none of the regulators to whom the report was submitted actually conducted anything more than a cursory review. Most of these errors and misstatements were glaringly obvious and would have been caught and challenged with even a minimum technical review. I've also reviewed emails showing that the regulators were unaware that corrective actions had taken place because the monitoring reports had made no mention that there were any problems to be addressed. These observations lead me to understand that these projects are effectively unregulated. Stream restoration projects are enormously destructive, and there's scads of documentary evidence showing that they don't provide any of the promised environmental benefits. In Longfellow, SHA cut down 10 acres of trees where we're in people's backyards. Now, three years later, we're finding out that the reforestation effort has failed, erosion is happening, and the monitoring reports are not being truthful about it. I question whether any of you who support these stream restoration projects would have the same opinion if one was proposed adjacent to your property. These projects have ignored impacts to adjacent residential properties for too long and should be removed from the MS4 Permits. I just want to add, I'm glad Mr. Bauer reminded me of something that I noticed in the MEP document that shocked me, and it was the discussion of the adaptive management projects. Where I come from, and I've worked on these for three years, adaptive management means learning from past mistakes. It means that you've learned from Project X so that you don't make the same mistakes on Project Y. The way it was written in this MEP, that's not what it is. It's going back and fixing projects that have failed. That's not adaptive management. Adaptive management deals with future projects, not fixing your projects that have failed. So thank you very much for hearing me out.
I apologize for the pronunciation. Sharon Boies? Boies? I'm sorry.
You got it. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sharon Boies, B-O-I-E-S, and I'm speaking on behalf of Protect Those Streams. Is it fair to say at this point that the TMDL, MS4, NPDES, and mitigation bank credit system has failed us? Think about it. What may have seemed like a good idea to some at first has not turned out for the better. The debit and credit system has not achieved the desired outcome after all these years. The philosophy is based on economics, not science, or you would have stopped this years ago. The system has failed the bay, our wallets, the environment, our streams, native wildlife and aquatic species, and the residents. It has allowed environmental degradation of waterways, neighborhoods, and public lands. The system allows contractors to profit from pollution without curing it. It allows development and paving of sensitive areas, and it allows unmitigated polluted runoff to continue to pour into the bay while producing credits. Most projects have little to no baseline and post-construction testing and monitoring to produce measurable results to ensure success. We've seen very little oversight and no penalties for projects that fail. Yes, SHA has a mandatory need for credits. The contractors are paid regardless of the results, and in cases where stream restorations take place in neighborhoods and parks, the residents and wildlife are left stunned, disrespected, disappointed, and disregarded. It leaves a bitter taste to be told. You're helping the bay as you watch your neighborhood forests leave stacked on the back of a log truck. Reforestation rates fail. Reforestation rates fail, but go unnoticed until residents speak out. Would a forty-nine percent success rate for bridges to remain standing be an acceptable success rate to the engineers at the S H A, like the success rate for the reforestation was in the S H A project in Columbia? By approving the permit with the stream restoration component in it, you'll be allowing irresponsible, expensive experiments to continue in our streams. You'll be allowing projects that contribute to climate change, species die-off, and global warming. You'll be allowing the conversion of thriving, mature, biodiverse forests to invasive species-filled, green, plastic-tube forests and full-of-life streams to warm, stagnant, murky, deoxygenated, rock-lined stormwater conveyance facilities. You'll be allowing the degradation of our neighborhoods and quality of life. Be responsible for the people who lay awake at night stressing about if they should move before the restoration destroys the neighborhood forest they were told would always be there. This assault on our streams or repairing forests and ecosystems must stop. Who decided these streams and forests belonged to them over the residents? And that the S H A should be allowed to degrade our neighborhoods and expose all of us to the negative impacts associated with these projects and leave us powerless to stop them? Why are private contractors allowed to profit from our natural resources that have been preserved for all these years? M D E must give more consideration to the next generation. Who decided that nitrogen, phosphorus, silt, and sediment are more important than aquatic species or mature forests? Or that cutting down a tree mitigates cutting down a tree? The authors of the Clean Water Act meant it for it to be a tool for the agencies to use for protection, not permission. The T M D L system has failed us, all of us, and it's time for a paradigm shift. That's what the Caesar Report says. That's what the health of the bay and our environment says, and it's what the most current science says. I don't believe that the S H A cares how the credits are produced. They just need them, which raises the question, why doesn't M D E just sell them the credits like a sin tax and not require any accompanying environmental harm? M D E has permitted seven to nine hundred stream restoration. You've allowed the annihilation of thousands of miles of stream and acres of forest for hundreds of millions of dollars. M D E is responsible for the death of billions of living organisms. Seven hundred to nine hundred experiments should be more than enough to have produced the desired results. But they haven't. I'm requesting that the permit be amended to exclude all proposed stream restoration projects and include evaluation of all prior S H A projects to ensure that all have achieved ecological uplift, improved water quality, and all other stated goals and objectives before we allow any more. This is a stormwater runoff and development issue, not a stream issue. If we are to keep this imperfect system, the M S four credit guidance document must be updated to reflect lessons learned and current science. Credit values should be reduced or eliminated for stream restorations and increased for the thirty-one other techniques currently listed. We should expand what qualifies for a T M D L to include P C Bs, P F O S, and chloride and maintenance on existing B M Ps. But first, you must ask yourselves, has the T M D L system failed us? Please amend the S H A permit to exclude all stream restorations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, we have Elle Bassett.
Good afternoon. My name is Ellie Bassett, E L L E, B A S S E T T. I am a Southwest Road Riverkeeper with the Rundle Rivers Federation, where we work to protect, restore, and preserve those waterways in Anne Arundel County. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments here today. I also look forward to submitting written comments. Everyone here, I'm sure knows, stormwater is the fastest-growing source of pollution in the Chesapeake Bay, and one of the main takeaways from the Chesapeake Bay Program's Comprehensive Evaluation of System Response Report, better known as Caesar, was that the emphasis that we need to put on addressing non-point source pollution such as stormwater. Unfortunately, I feel like this permit, this draft permit, doesn't really reflect that past or future growth for stormwater pollution. Just a specific example, in part six of the draft permit under Special Programmatic Conditions, specifically references that any additional loads from new development will be offset through Maryland's Aligning for Growth Program and Policy. That's a program that hasn't existed or met since 2013. Additionally, while the fact sheet does note the value of practices such as G S I or green infrastructure, the actual permit doesn't outline how exactly green infrastructure practices will be incentivized. Can we set actual percentage goals to meet that? I was grateful to be part of the collaborative meetings with advocates and department staff following the 2023 legislative session, where we worked to identify specific floors and ceilings for practices such as G S I or impervious removal. However, none of those discussions or efforts are really reflected in this draft. The State Highway Administration Permit touches, because it touches on all of these Phase One M S four permit jurisdictions and many more, as C L A noted, this could have been a real opportunity to step up to the stormwater challenge, but by issuing a permit that requires less stormwater management than the previous one, we're completely missing that opportunity. We're not setting the right precedent. Rundle Rivers respectfully urges the department to meet with legislative leaders, to meet with budgetary leaders, and to meet with the governor's office to set aside at least as much funding for S H A stormwater management as the General Assembly did a decade ago. Rundle Rivers is eager to continue former conversations with the department and fellow advocates to assist with this effort, and I look forward to submitting comments. Thank you.
Next, we have Roger Davis.
My name is Roger Davis, R O G E R D A V I S, and I've lived near the Plum Tree Branch in Howard County for twenty-eight years. I believe you have failed your responsibility to protect the environment with regards to Howard County and with the S H A. The Howard County application permit for our stream restoration was filled with lies and misrepresentations that would be evident to anyone with a critical eye who visited the site. Their claims of streambank erosion were wild exaggerations, which would be evident to anyone who looked at the age of the trees lining the streambanks. I personally know there is no significant stream migration because my children have been playing in the stream for twenty-eight years. They claim there was a history of mills on the Plum Tree Branch because of its proximity to Ellicott City. They even included a picture of Martinet's map of eighteen sixty-four, which showed all the mills on the Patapsco River and throughout Howard County at the time. My neighbor Lee Preston actually wrote the book on archaeology in Howard County and said he was not aware of any mills on the Plum Tree Branch. The Plum Tree Branch is not even in the Patapsco watershed. Another lie is the tree count game. Howard County reported the planned removal of twelve-inch trees, twelve inches or larger, so they claimed they were removing less than fifty trees. Of course, they provided a detailed list of the hundreds of saplings that they would be planting. I did a tree count of a sample of the area where they proposed a secondary unnecessary truck path adjacent to the school playing fields and estimated the path alone would have required the removal of seven hundred trees. I've walked the entire length of the Plum Tree Branch and its unknown tributary that was restored in 2017. This tributary starts at an outfall pipe from U S twenty-nine. This pipe drains into an area that could easily be converted into a stormwater management pond with almost no excavation needed. Yes, S H A ignores that possibility, and you approve a stream restoration that destroyed a shady ecosystem filled with skunk cabbage that is now a sunny field with dead saplings and a warm stream choked with algae. I was fortunate to have spent my youth fly fishing in the Poconos, so I know what a healthy trout stream looks like. I find the term "stream restoration" to be an offensive lie. Further upstream, the Plum Tree Branch crosses U S forty, where there's an additional opportunity to put in a major stormwater management pond. There is six acres of property owned by the Catholic Church behind Home Depot that could be used. Further upstream, there's a house that's been put up in stilts and another that I watched being demolished because of flooding. The Plum Tree Branch starts at Interstate seventy. There are eroded gullies ten foot high where the water drains off the highway. The S H A owns property adjacent to I seventy, and there are sixty acres that have yet to be developed that could be used to save the Plum Tree Branch and the homeowners that have suffered with flooding for decades. When I first walked Plum Tree years ago, I came across a stream gauge with a name and phone number on it. It was an academic hydrologist who told me the sediment and nutrient removal rates were quote "all made up." He advised me to look up the research of Margaret Palmer. So I am here to request that you stop doing stream restorations until you have, in your words, new scientific knowledge of six hundred and forty stream restorations that show they work. People have mentioned the Caesar Report. That report mentioned, I think, mentioned stream restorations two times. It lumped them in with B M Ps. To me, that is just, it's just cowardice to not acknowledge what is going on and what you are allowing to happen. It's just, it's shameful. And you need to wake up, do the right thing.
Thank you. Next, we have Ernesto Diaz Noy.
I would like to raise several critical concerns regarding Maryland, wait, first of all, my name is Ernesto Diaz Noy, and I'm here on behalf of Water Keepers Chesapeake as the Director of Agribusiness and Members of Order. I would like to raise several critical concerns regarding the Maryland Department of Environment N P D S permit for M S four discharges to the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration. While the efforts to manage stormwater are appreciated, there are significant issues that need immediate attention to ensure equitable environmental protection and effective pollution mitigation strategies. First and foremost, the absence of a commitment to a minimum amount of restoration work in environmental justice areas is deeply troubling. Environmental justice demands that resources and efforts be distributed equitably, yet the lack of specific mandates disproportionately affects marginalized communities who are already burdened by pollution. Moreover, the reduction in overall restoration work not only slows down pollution mitigation efforts, but also perpetuates environmental disparities. Pollution impacts communities differently, with some bearing a heavier burden than others. By scaling back on restoration efforts, we risk widening these disparities rather than alleviating them. The concept of pollution trading, as facilitated by this permit, directly contradicts the principles of environmental justice. It creates sacrifice zones and exacerbates disproportionate impacts on vulnerable communities. Despite the vocal commitment of the Moore Administration to promote environmental justice, this permit fails to align with those aspirations. Furthermore, while the permit acknowledges the importance of aligning with T M D Ls in local water quality conditions, the reduction in investment in stormwater controls delay progress towards meeting T M D L reductions. This delay only prolongs the restoration of impaired waters listed in the permit's appendix, leaving communities waiting for essential improvements to their local environments. Additionally, studies have repeatedly shown that our transportation system is a significant source of pollution, with runoff containing a cocktail of harmful chemicals including lead, mercury, P A H S, P C Bs, and P F O S. Ignoring the urgent need to address this undermines the health and wellbeing of communities across Maryland. I urge the Maryland Department of Environment to reconsider the provisions of the N P D S permit for M S four discharges to the Maryland Department of Transportation, S H A. It is imperative to prioritize environmental justice, uphold commitments to pollution mitigation, and work towards tangible improvements in water quality for all communities. Thank you.
That's it for the names on the signed sheet. Does anyone else wish to speak at this time? Anybody who wants to submit written testimony after today can do so up until July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Comments can be submitted to Mr. Stuart Comstock, Maryland Department of the Environment, Water and Science Administration, Stormwater, Dam Safety, and Flood Management Programs, one thousand eight hundred Washington Boulevard, Suite four hundred forty, Baltimore, Maryland, two one two three oh hyphen one seven zero eight, or email at stewart dot comstock at maryland dot gov. After the comment period has closed on July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the department will develop a response to comments document. Anyone who added their name to the signed sheet today will be added to the department's interested parties list for M dot S H A and will be kept apprised of all permit actions via email announcements. I want to thank everyone for attending today's public hearing and for your participation in these important matters. This public hearing has now concluded.